Okay, um, I have a, um, I have one.
Okay.
In March.
So then she's gonna hand two fifty then to school.
Oh, just, yeah, okay, well, I wanna bring her the first kiss of the day.
I have a whole lot to tell her for.
Yeah.
Uh, the time of this clock having a ride of public speaking award, please rise for.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united in the principle of under teaching justice.
Okay, Julie, do you have four? Uh, so the next item, number four, approval of the agenda, is there any change of sequence or removal of items?
So I am gonna request that item six, which is the pampered pride awards, uh, for all of our student athletes who received academic all dimension in their plentiful, uh, they're actually, many of them are playing in the baseball game right now.
Exactly.
So I spoke to all of them today, the softball and baseball players, and I asked, um, I told them I would ask if we could move that back.
Sure.
Um, and leave it tentative, and they were gonna come immediately following the baseball game, softball's over, already Rick said, so as soon as the baseball players and softball players, in fact, hit show up, his track is watching baseball and softball.
Well, they can support each other.
So they're all gonna come in, they're gonna come together, so I've been asking if we could move that to when they come in, then we'll fit it in wherever it comes after that, so it'll likely be sometime during the information and, uh, all the items.
Okay, is it consensus? Okay, um, we have to approve that, don't we?
We approve it.
Okay, um, I will entertain motion to adjust the agenda for the pampered pride award.
Also move.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to adjust the agenda for the pampered pride, um, item six, celebrations, all in favor?
I.
Oppose, motion carried. Um, the next agenda item is announcements and the student representative update.
So they, they gave, uh, they gave it to Taylor because actually Emma's actually the try copy of the new baseball ones.
All right, so, um, Emma and Kaylee sent me this this afternoon, so on April twenty fifth, we're celebrating birthday, um, and doing the community cleanup, um, after we do the community cleanup, students are going to, uh, settle whether they're going to kayak team hiking, um, or participating in a competitive activity, um, it's a fun day to show some appreciation for our community and to clean up around our area, so, that's coming up next couple Fridays. Prom, prom will be made third, which is also going very fast, um, the theme that the junior class picked this year is fishing in the dark, uh, the junior prom part was voted on and announced, um, I believe, before spring break, so there's your prom court. Um, the friends of steam, um, competed, um, and they went on their club trip, um, to the St. Hastings Dinner Theater to watch a musical, I think they watched Grease, um, they said it was really, it was amazing, so, um, they competed for their state, uh, this past weekend, they got gold medals, um, our group interpretation, we had ours, Ava Jones, Kira Knudsen, and Rand Donal, um, play acting, Connor Adaman, Haley Baxter, Maverick Bird, and Katie Ostriness, and every group that participated qualified, uh, for the state week. Science Olympia. Um, a team competed at the state tournament, UW South, um, the students medaled in two events, um, and our second place winners were in antifiz, were Gwen Cum and Emma Bowden, and fourth place of forestry was Jennifer Schiller and Olivia Moore. Um, so our F, our future business leaders of America, our FBLA team also competed at the state level in Green Bay, they had a very successful trip, uh, placed in two different categories, our fifth place finishers, uh, was, um, business plan, uh, Brooke Rollsmann, Miles Gray, and Matthew Boudel, our seventh place, social media strategies, Reese Grimm and Andy Lee Reese, and our seventh place, sales presentation, Juan Cum and Emma Bowden and Jacobson.
Too bad they're not here to present on their own stuff.
Uh, so spring sports are well on their way, um, softball, baseball, softball has, uh, started their season, they played Nacusa, Rochelle, and Spencer last week, um, they, um, uh, did not win against Nacusa, but winning against Rochelle and Spencer, bringing their record to three-three. And baseball started their season off strong, they also played Nacusa, Rochelle, and Spencer, um, they lost to Spencer last Friday and winning against Nacusa and Rochelle, their record is five and two. And track, uh, both boys and girls track have competed across many areas so far, Marshfield, Stevens Point, and the Wassa West meets, um, for girls track, in their most recent Wassa West meet, they had a lot of multiple achievements, Annie Elsasser placed seventh in the four-hundred meter, Reese Grimm placed first in the eight-hundred meter, uh, Phoenix, Phoenix Woszewski placed second in the mile, and Kayla Rollsmann placed third in the two-mile. And for the boys, uh, Cole Fulton placed third, this is at the Wassa West meet as well, Cole Fulton placed third in the mile, and Hartley Swan placed thirteenth in the fifty-five meter dash? Is this, yeah, fifty-five meter dash, yes.
Indoor's good.
Just common?
Yes. Yes, indoor, um, invitationals are huge, and they have a lot of bigger schools, so they're competing, you know, to place, again, absolutely, you know, the division one schools is really a big deal.
The one in Stevens Point last weekend, twenty-four teams, and I think this may have similar, it was on two different nights, the girls competed on Thursday, boys on Friday.
Yep. And I would say graduation is, um, gonna be ending our school year, um, but it's, again, coming up very fast, um, May twenty-fourth, um, it's gonna be a little bit over and off the go. That doesn't say nothing. Good job.
Usually we have student reps soon.
Okay, so, next, we have, um, the group celebrations, so next we go to the consent agenda. Um, items there include the meeting notice certification, regular meeting minutes of March tenth, the, um, financial status, and the various funds, um, item D is retirement, Doug Schultz, Middle School, and Gina Zicker, High School, we thank them for their years of service, resignations, um, Nicole Gantmeyer, custodian, uh, basketball, J D Boys Basketball Coach, um, Dan Rayburn and Justin Rayburn, Mark Deniston, head, Boys Basketball Coach, Chris Solatik, he is assistant football coach, um, that's another one that I think has been in it for a long time, yeah, yeah, well, has, has, the Rayburns and, um, and Mark Deniston, and then Travis LaPryce, the library media specialist. And we have a list of higher ends, J D Girls Basketball, Dan Vitner, Junior High Girls Basketball, Dan Rayburn, district administrator, district administrative assistant, Jennifer Zwisland, special education instructor, Sonia Haas, elementary teacher Samantha Schwannabek, and elementary teacher Victoria Hasenbaum. Um, and, um, I'd like to suggest that we pull item, um, F three, which would be, um, the district administrator, um, assistant, for a separate motion. And then, yep, 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 that's what we got here. So, um, and then the, um, early graduation request, we can do that as part of the.
Consent.
Out of it. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items, A through E, F, one, two, four, six, and item G.
Two, four, five, and six.
One, two, oh, four, two, yes, four, five, and six, thank you, Rick.
I motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented, um, with F three being approved a little bit later.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items with one item revoked, is there any discussion or questions? If not, let's vote, all in favor, I oppose, motion carried. Now I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda item F three with Chris Zwisland abstaining.
I'll make a motion to approve. John Zwisland, John Chris Zwisland as the district administrator assistant.
I'll second.
Is we moved and seconded to approve Jennifer Zwisland as the administrative assistant? Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say the five I'm saying, I.
I.
Oppose, motion carried on a four-zero vote with Chris Zwisland abstaining. Okay, uh, next, item number eight, information only, the district administrator updates.
Do you have a link to this in your email?
In the agenda.
In the agenda, thank you. So, uh, Taylor talked about graduation coming up, uh, I wanted to, it's gonna be here before we know it, on the way, right, and it goes quick this time of year, the back parade is going to be on May twenty-first at five-thirty PM, this year it's at St. John's Lutheran Church. Senior awards night will be Wednesday, May twenty-first at seven PM in the auditorium, and then, as Taylor referenced, graduation will be Saturday, May twenty-fourth, at Tanya Allen High School, it's amazing. So I wanted to take this opportunity, uh, you're well aware, we've seen, uh, over the last several months is, uh, we've seen retirements, resignations, and then, uh, hirings coming through, I wanted to give the board and the community, I'm gonna have the administrators jump in here as we go through this to give an update on kind of where we're at without getting into the specifics, but just a general, where we're at on these vacant positions, these were all positions that have been vacant since, uh, I think the special education bare professional has been open since probably before Christmas, yep, but the other positions are all after, uh, January, after we came through, so, uh, administrators, Danny, guys who are going to learn any particular, Leslie, why don't you go first and just kind of give the board an overview of our filled positions and then what we're still looking to hire?
So, obviously, you know, a lot of them are retirements, and so, um, we've filled our kindergarten and fourth grade, and as of Saturday morning, we filled our second grade, um, position, we went to the job fair and found some good candidates, so that is, um, nice, our library media specialist has been posted, and we have interviews for that on Friday.
Yeah, we did. It's not for Wednesday night because it just happened today.
It just happened, just.
Yep, just happened today, the jo, the job fair, Leslie referenced, or you may recall in the past, we, uh, Stevens Point runs a spring, actually, a fall and a spring job fair, so all, uh, college of education graduates, uh, districts can get a table over there, you sit at this table, and then all the captains come around, we had a list of our postings in the room, we solicited, uh, several, uh, candidates, including one that interviewed and was, uh, offered the secretary position, so.
At the high school, we still have the man position open, um, as well as special education. And we have some candidates for the man position.
We filled one of the two positions for special education teacher, hopefully will fill that familiar picture, we have some interviews, some of the other special education divisions, so after the chair position.
Yeah, we've been very fortunate, we do have applicants, they're for all the positions other than the bare professional positions, so, Taylor, do you want to add on that CTE box?
For fourth term autos, uh, classes are running during third block, um, Mary Go Wheeler and Sally Knieger trying to come in and, um, perform some casts, I was in there today and they tore apart engines, so, me knowing nothing, that's very foreign to me, so, um, yeah, it's going really well, they actually toured, uh, those cast around the dealership, um, two Fridays, last Friday, um, they actually went to the oil trade, even leave the technicians and talk to them, and have lots over there, so, um, I think for her service, uh, through, through, so, yeah, it's going very well.
Now what was great about that is obviously to keep, there, there's a lot of kids interested in those programs, and, you know, it was nice to keep the interest in, in the kids' needs here, we're a major of this year before we have our whole, I'm instructor studying next year, so, I see the majority of our folks, I did tell several people, six-thirty was kind of a, you guys okay with sitting for, for Mr., the rest of my update, Mr. Klein's after-school update, if one people want to turn off, all right. Any questions for the board on any of the positions? So, uh, as you are probably aware, we had accepted offer on lot eight on Third Street, the district owned property, and, uh, closing is Wednesday morning, I'll be signing the papers in Marshfield, and the purchasers, purchasers plan, putting the duplex up on the lot, sale price was seventeen thousand dollars, so, obviously, a win-win is, is the property goes on the tax roll, um, we get additional housing, which is, of course, an issue in the community, um, so, it's, uh, really.
Roosters. Issues one update.
I don't even know how to exclude you if I wanted to. So.
But it's true. Sorry.
Any questions on any of that, uh, and my understanding is that process is gonna start rather quickly because that was something they worked out with the city, uh, prior, prior to the purchase to find out about any zoning restrictions and getting that, um, two-family residence up on there, it's a good, good thing, okay, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, and, uh, next, item B, we have the after-school program update from Mr. Klein.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, opportunity to come in and talk today about our after-school program, um, we have grown quite a bit this year in general, uh, especially in the last few months, uh, last year at the end of the year, we finished with eighty-four students who were participating in our program, this year, we are at a hundred and ten students who have participated in at least one day with the after-school program, um, the growth is, is a clear sign that the program's pretty strong, the kids are enjoying their time there, um, during this time, we have snack provided to students, that which really helps with some of our students who are, um, suffering through food insecurity, uh, fifty-six percent of our students in the program are either free, free or reduced lunches, so, uh, it does help a lot of our families in that sense, uh, it gives those families a place for their kids to go after school, where they can get some extra homework of, and, uh, out of the, uh, fifty-seven teacher surveys, um, forty-seven of those were positive, saying academic growth was noticed with the students who were participating, um, three of the students that, of the ten that they said did not show academic growth, actually are on the honor roll, so, I don't know how to take that, if, uh, we're not showing academic growth, they just seem really strong and are continuing that trend, so that's very helpful, and then there were two students who have moved out, uh, so we're only in the program for a couple days, so, um, I, I think it looks really good for what we're showing there, um, and then we are offering, uh, varying enrichment activities, which have been, oh gosh, they have such a wide range, anywhere from steam and stem activities to, uh, ELA-related activities, uh, cooking has been a very popular one, anything where we can get food out there for the, uh, especially the middle schoolers, uh, keeps them very engaged, uh, we do some fitness, uh, now going to two days a week, Ms. Frericks and, uh, Mr. Coon come in, and they offer, uh, the weight room and cardio room for the older kids, and then Ms. Frericks offers a yoga or aerobics group for the youngers, um, and they look forward to that credit. During this, we've also continued to build strong relationships within the community, uh, we have paid partnerships with Discovery Education Station and Team Extreme, and they come in on Wednesdays to help with our, uh, after-school program when the teachers are in their meetings, so that helps us tremendously, so we also have developed some, uh, volunteer community, uh, partners with the Associated Bank, who's actually there tonight, and did a financial literacy activity with students, learning about coins and counting money, um, Wood County Four-H, which comes in every other week, and they offer different activities for our students, and then Pet Supply Plus, who also comes in, um, every other Wednesday to help, uh, introduce the kids to different animals that they do have at their pet store, but then to teach them about care of those animals as well, and we've had quite a variety, if you check out Pittsville Record, there's a nice article in there that lists some of the animals that they have seen this year. Um, and these are, are so meaningful for our students, uh, they're excited when Pet Supply Plus comes in and shows their animals, uh, they really enjoyed the hamster races that they had a few weeks ago, uh, those were kind of fun, um, but also on top of that, we also are getting community volunteers who are coming in, we have, um, two volunteers who come in and help with enrichment activities, um, and we have three volunteers who come in and help with homework activities, um, and board member and superintendent coming in to help out with, uh, activities here and there too, so, it has been, it's been wonderful, and, uh, it, it really helps our program, uh, the other area that we've really changed, uh, and improved on this year is we have fourteen high school students who have helped throughout the year, um, they come in, some have offered enrichment activities, and others have come in to help with homework, and it's been great to see the connections that students are making, uh, with the community as well as the high schoolers who are coming in, and Emma is here to talk a little bit about what she sees as a high school student who's helping out.
So I have very much to do with your, with your job, and this program has been very helpful for me, we've found connections, recently, we have started breaking up with groups, so each high school student has a different, like, grade to work with, I work with four pairs, and it's definitely been a very interesting experience, but I have learned a lot, and I think the little kids having offered the opportunities, we need some of our high school students to show love and school care is very beneficial for them, 'cause I'd like to hear about our experience of being in elementary school and letting everyone help with their interests.
Well, let's, let's face some challenges with the program, please do.
Um, probably our biggest challenge has happened, um, with the increase in our numbers, um, it makes it really hard to get enough bodies to help keep everybody entertaining. Um, right now, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, those are two really jam-packed days with students, we're around sixty kids, uh, at program those nights, and to offer enough enrichment activities where we can keep those numbers small, especially if you have community members coming in who maybe don't work with kids that often, have ten to twelve kids in the group, and have hands-on and entertaining activity is difficult, so, uh, to keep those numbers small, we try to offer more activities. Homework help has been difficult to make sure we have enough, the high schoolers definitely help, the community volunteers help, but it is hard when we're short, and I'm looking for a couple people to come in and, and fill a few hours here and there, um, that's probably been our biggest, uh, difficulty, um, you know, there's always the communication with families to make sure that we have the schedule that they, they need for the week, uh, there's quite a few changes that happen Monday morning, uh, even though we asked you to have the Thursday before notice so we can get snack counts in, figure out busing and staffing, um, but I would say the biggest area is definitely the staffing areas.
So clearly, community members coming in to the board meeting or watching, so what kind of activities, what are the requirements for someone who may want to offer enrichment?
So if you'd like to offer enrichment, uh, contact me, either, uh, calling to the school or email me, um, but we are looking for activities that are, it could be any number of things, if you have a special interest or talent that you'd like to share, if you like to cook, uh, bake, sew, um, maybe you'd like to.
Play card games?
Play card games, I'm really looking for someone to come in and teach cribbage, um, I've been teaching a few kids here and there cribbage, and I think we have a, uh, group that, once they learn it, would really find that interesting, I know Mr. LaPryce had started, uh, chess tournament, and the kids were really interested in coming in for their chess tournament, uh, games, if we could get someone to come in and we could offer a cribbage night, um, you know, there's, uh, there's a lot of opportunities, uh, nature, if you'd like to go out and teach kids about the different trees that we have on, even on our school property, um, kindness activities, uh, we just did a book club with, uh, Miss Dowell, she offered a book club where the kids read and they discussed the book, and at the end, we had a pizza party, which was a huge hit, again, anytime there's food involved, the kids are extremely excited, uh, we can offer a robotics club, um, Mr. Petrie comes in and does some math lessons for some students, if we had, you know, somebody who has an interest in teaching a chess role, right now I'm in the process of working with, uh, one of our families who are Native American, who are interested in coming in and teaching a little bit about their culture, so, uh, those are wonderful activities, um, honestly, if you have a skill or talent that you'd like to share with kids, uh, talk to me and we can see what we can do to work that out.
I also feel that talking with the older kids, there's a lot of new activities that are geared for the older kids, so it's not really an engagement for a four or five, so it's kind of, uh, whatever, if they're like, if they have some, or, so I think if we have more new activities that are more geared towards them, we'd be glad wanting to come in and talk to, like, you know, for kids and first graders, you know.
Wonderful, that.
Thank you for it, boy.
Yeah, I think the program's come a long way.
We still have room to grow, but, uh, it's, it's going on, I think in a year or two we've made some great gains.
Thank you. Okay, um, you know, this is a nice, um, near for breaks.
I'll tell you what, I'll start with the, I'm, I'm just, I might be a few track hits because I did say six-thirty, but, uh, I'll start with the, I'll start with the baseball team, I'll say, all right, excuse me, with the football and boys and basketball teams.
More people in the schools.
I would prefer that, if you're willing to do that.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that, let's go into item C, which is the North Pole, um, the, um, Most First Education Foundation committee met, uh, about a month ago, I was virtual, I really can't do a very good report, so I'm hoping Rick and Chris can summarize.
I bet Nate was gonna summarize.
Or Nate, he's gonna summarize on that one, okay.
Yeah, I took that, so, took a long third goal to be more, um, financially solid, I guess, if you get, right, we're looking into occasionally Pittsville, uh, foundation, maybe through the school, or really, some, some other ways, we've had a couple meetings about it, and, on, uh, February twenty-sixth, we met with, uh, a representative from, um.
Community foundation?
Yeah, community, yeah, the scale dome is, it's exactly the director of the National Community Foundation, um, so she explained a little bit about the, the fair foundation that I was gonna check, I think, uh, quite a few questions from us, um, some of the questions the board had was, uh, how did you, um, set up a foundation, the different things that we could set up and manage, which was several, um, there was a lot of new additions there, um, also we discussed a lot of the running of it, how, how it came to be, either by the board, through a separate board, through their foundation, um, for, you know, a small fee every year, um, there wasn't any action that we took, um, the, the main, main takeaway that, yeah, citing the lack of your purpose plea at the beginning is critical because it's not something that we change, so, you know, we've had a lot of different ideas talking about what you want to use the money for, or how you have to do that, so those, I think, before we go further, you have to, as you decide, how we want to set it up, because it's all a piece of setup, you know, which is, yeah. So I think our next step, so, you know, there's, there's some, we're going to have to figure it out, but then, how would it be supported?
Um, is there another meeting?
Well, just, yeah, definitely we have a second meeting, it's after that, yeah.
You know, we have our holes, you know, to load all the holes, this week.
Yeah. That's the other one. Oh, sorry, pardon me. Okay, thank you, Nate, and then the, um, the Childcare Center Committee, Julie?
So we met and it came to a really good overview of just kind of the current status of where we're at in regards to, um, the number of kids in our childcare, um, where we're at from a staffing perspective, where we're at with maybe children that are just waiting, um, or, and waiting, some, some are just on a list, they're not actually ready to come yet, maybe not even born yet, that's just what happens in childcare these days, or think about having a baby and put them on a waitlist for childcare, um, so, we went through all of that and really discussed where we work at, um, current from a financial standpoint, and determined we're actually. and determined we're actually meeting April twenty-eighth because we want to dig into, and Hannah's going to do some additional analysis with us about a few scenarios. So what if we expanded a classroom? What if we expanded two classrooms? What would that do financially? Would it actually help us get more in alignment? Would it widen the gap, narrow the gap? And so we're putting a few scenarios together to kind of determine what that looks like, so that we just have some better data as we're moving forward. And then also, of course, the other challenges that come with assuring that we can staff, what that looks like. So we talked about some of those challenges and what we might, ideas and things we might be able to put in place. So I don't know that we have any, you know, and then we also talked about needing to look at our rates and our structure of how we set up our rates, as well as what our rate structure is, and probably get those in a little bit more in alignment with where other childcare centers are at right now, with some of the similar, maybe rules around what that looks like, as well as what that, what the potential increase might need to be, just to be in alignment with kind of what those rates are looking like. So those were, so it was, I would say it was very much informational. It wasn't an action-oriented meeting. It was informational. And then out of that meeting, we generated a number of work, a number of additional questions. So that is why we're really, we're hoping, and then out of that, hopefully, we'll have some great recommendations for us to consider as a board as we're going into our next fiscal year. Any questions?
We'll get, during the staffing update, we did, did an accepted offer on the one lead teacher position in the childcare that individual will be starting on July first, so.
You're back from the job fair?
No, I would love to take credit for that, but actually, from the job fair, we did have Rochelle was sitting next to us at the job fair, and they requested to come. They're exploring starting a childcare center in the school district, and they're going to come over. They want to come over and do a segment. And there were a lot of early childhood folks there, but we did have the material there, but I don't think we were able to, we didn't get any childcare.
They rewarded you so much.
A lot of elementary, yeah.
Will we see that position on Monday also?
Yes, yep. Did you see how I said, started to say no, no?
I don't have anything on it, so.
So this was like, this, once again, this was this afternoon. We would have, we'll get it added on there. I'll have Tab get the stuff. Deb's strong because we need to repost.
I'm probably going to be twenty-four hours.
Yeah, we still have twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
We did our best. It happened at like one-thirty this afternoon.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right.
So why don't we sell right?
Yep, all right. So all of these young men and women that are here tonight are here because they have received recognition in each of their organizations for their sport that they were involved in. And this is going all the way back to the start of the school year. So I believe all, all of our school-sponsored sports have an organization that does an academic all-state team. So you've heard of the all-state team for Athletic Success. They also have an academic all-state team. So I'm going to start with our volleyball team and our football team. So, yep, please. All right, football. So receiving recognition for football is Matthew Doudel. And some of these folks are going to be multiple recipients, so they'll be coming up more than one time. Deb, do you want to come up?
Mr. Matt. Matthew also got elected to the National Football Foundation Scholar-Athlete Team.
Excellent. All right, girls volleyball. This is, there's so many of them here. And Deb is still organizing, put clips on all of them. All right, so girls volleyball. So I'm going to call off the names of each of the persons that received one. Some aren't here tonight. Taylor's going to take those give out. So Sloane Withers, Reese Graham, Lana Ballard, Kendall Ha, Kaylee Jacobson, Jason Andrews, Gwen, Gwen is come. Emma Bowden, Brett Friday, Brooke Grossman, David Jones, Angelina Reese, Eddie Elsasser. Those are our girls volleyball, obviously. All right, so we'll do wrestling next. So receiving recognition for wrestling, Jackson Doer, Autumn McDaniel, and Cole Fulton. Boys basketball. Dalton Dar, Ben Friday, Matthew Doudel, Darren Luther, Dawson Luther, Titus Reese, all right, and girls volleyball, our girls basketball. Amy Jones.
Congratulations for getting last.
Double recipient, Margaret Strupindal. Eddie Elsasser, double recipient. Riley Lukie, Daily Tronzo, Emma Bowden, double recipient. Brooke Grossman, double recipient. Brett Friday, double recipient. Kendall Ha, double recipient. Lana Ballard, double recipient. Gwen is come, double recipient. Kelly Friday. Kaylee Jacobson, double recipient. And Reese Graham, double recipient. Emma Bowden, I don't have a certificate for her, but she'll be getting a plaque the last weekend in April. She was recognized as one of sixteen girls statewide. She received the Elite Academic All-State Award. So there were fifteen boys and sixteen girls. Emma's one of them. She'll receive that award at the Academic All-State banquet. Reese is going to be recognized for first-time all-state for basketball, and Emma's going to get the Elite Academic Award at that banquet. So the last one we're going to give out is, all of you that are members of the girls' basketball team. So the girls' basketball team also was recognized as an all-state team. So what they do is you submit a GPA for your team cumulative. And what's impressive about this is it's for all years of high school. So for your seniors, this is for all of their report cards, all the way through high school, juniors, et cetera. Freshmen, it's easy, right? Usually have one report card at this point. Not, not, not to give, but still. So for the seniors to do this is pretty impressive. So after tabulating all that, we had a cumulative team GPA of three point nine oh seven, Pittsville basketball team did, which ranked us third in the state in Division Five. The two teams in front, and I point this out, not that there's any sour grapes about it, but they only had six implied players nominated. We had fourteen. So our GPA was tabulated off of fourteen players. Theirs were off of six and five, which makes it more impressive to have that high GPA. So all of the players and managers that are here for the girls' basketball team, I'm going to call you up. And you have an individual certificate for that, and we're going to have a plaque in the trophy case, you know, in the deck, because it's pretty impressive. So Eddie, Ellie, Lana, Ava, Leah, Daley, Reese, Bryn, and Kendall. Bailey. Daley. Congratulations, girls. Thanks for coming. I hope you guys will cooperate.
Oh, no. I wish you did. It was easy. Wow, we have lots of good stuff.
Very much so.
Very much so. Thank you. Okay, moving right along, our discussion action items. That is item number nine. Item eight is the report of the election canvas.
Yes, 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 it's to, you and Chris, just send this to Chris.
And there is a canvas report. Online, well, we can see online. What do I need to say about this? There were two people running, there were two open spots, and they both won. So what else do I say? So the Board of Canisters, which includes Mark Dar, Rick Winters, and Karen Gerolds, certify the election of Mary Ann T. Lippert and Chris Zwistlin to terms on the Pittsville Board of Education. And now I see Chris and I have official things to sign. And then we have to take our open contest. So can we do this sitting down or should we stand up?
I don't know. Yep.
I think we should stand up. Okay.
It's supposed to be in the notes.
Okay, I'm Mary Ann Lippert.
Don't you mind us hear this first?
Sure, well, or else we could do it together.
Do it together.
Yeah, that's better.
Read it together.
Yeah, I'm Mary Ann Lippert.
And I'm Chris Zwistlin.
Having been elected to the office, we can say this together.
Having
Having been elected to the office of the School District of Pittsville, swear that I was supporting the Constitution of the United States and the State of Wisconsin, and that I will faithfully and personally discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I'm missing a word.
Yeah. Okay, so we have to sign this, and then I think we're official. And then Deb will file the appropriate paperwork. Okay. So. Oh, okay. So the next item on the agenda is to appoint the school board representative for CISA V. And we have information on CISA V and the CISA Annual Convention. Is anyone interested?
I went last year, I'll go again this year.
Okay, one is wrong. I, do we need a motion or can we just appoint? You can just appoint, okay. We will. Consensus is to appoint Rick Winters to be the Pittsville School District CISA V representative. So you're official, right? Okay, item B, updates to the twenty-five, twenty-six PHS course handbook, automotive technology.
Yeah, so since we have hired a full-time teacher, he's had a chance to look at the courses. Generally, it's just changing the titles of the courses. So you'll see the same amount of courses being offered, maybe a little tweak to the who it's offered to. And then we're actually looking at running an auto, the advanced auto tech. You see it's two credits down below. We're looking at scheduling that to be all-year long. So there are eleven to twelve kids that may be working in the afternoon or need related courses for their YA. They'll have the course all-year long. We're kind of playing around with the schedule right now, so. But yeah, all the classes pretty much are the same except for just the names of the courses.
Did this support us being able to provide for those students who were thinking of taking mid-state classes, but without us being able to hire them? We don't need to, because I know we, like, tentatively approved it, but we were hoping that if we got the right
Correct, correct.
So, yes. So we're saving them, we're not, we're not
I believe so.
He is an A C cert, right?
Yeah, he is an A C cert, right, but I think, I think your class
Have the Stark College now and the, are the ECCP classes? Yes, the, these would take place of those classes, depending on their work schedule, because that's another tricky point that we're looking at. But we're trying to really, like, ask those kids, are you working in the afternoon? Are you working in the morning? So we can put those classes that they need for their related instruction at a specific time to offer it in-house.
Sure, so are these classes, those classes, that those two students that we offer, or are these different things?
These would be the classes that we offer in-house. They would be, they would, they would be incorporated to the classes that they might have taken for their college classes, which would be the mid, I mean, he's not running dual-credit classes yet. I think that's the goal, to eventually have a road. But I don't, I don't think that they're taking place, or I'm sorry, they are, these kids would be able to take these classes in-house rather than going to mid-state to take the classes.
And I think that would be, yeah, the eventual, the goal is to offer dual-credit certified classes.
Yes.
But right now, can we answer if kids are taking these instead of going to?
Well, when you, when Marissa presented to us,
Yep.
what was said is that if we hired the right person,
Yep.
potentially those two classes that we approved, we wouldn't actually need to pay for them to go out, because the teacher would be, well, I know we hired the right person.
Yeah, those classes are on this list.
We were talking about those kids going to mid-state to take classes. If we didn't hire an auto class, these classes would take place instead of those kids going to mid-state.
So those, those two students won't be taking the mid-state class because they're taking the
Correct.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were asking. I thought you were talking like hypothetically.
No, no, we actually, that was actually a conversation that Marissa presented.
Yep.
Yes.
That was my comment.
So that's okay.
So those numbers would be
So those are on here, those classes that we
Correct, correct, yep.
Taylor, can you talk briefly about, Deb, can you stand back to the top? That diesel, talk about that consumer auto maintenance and diesel technology, the Ratchelfer habit, that kind of a split, like, what's going to go on during that block potentially?
Well, so it's called diesel technology right now, but it's going to go more to consumer auto maintenance. So this class is going to hit a wide variety of kids. Maybe they don't want to go to autos, but they want to know how to do a tire change. They want to know how to do a oil change, or how to get car insurance, or some of those things that us not in the automotive field can take, but still get some quality instruction. So that's a very popular class where he teaches right now, and you get the wide variety. You get females, you get males. He's, you know, I think he's got, he's capped out at his classes in where he's at right now, teaching, so I'm assuming that's going to be a very popular class moving forward.
Well, if I read the course description and I want to change.
I told him, I said, one thing I do wish when I was at high school is to take an autos class, because I don't know how to change my tire, or if I get a flat tire, what do I do? Or, you know, stuff like that, so I wish some of these kids take the opportunity to take some of these classes, so.
Any other questions? So it was
Suspension and steering and intro to electricity.
Okay, intro is actually on there, the suspension and steering will be a part. Taylor, do you know which ones those fall under, the ones you were just talking about with the student requests? The electronics one, there is an actual class that covers just the electric, the electronics piece that is actually named that, but the suspension systems and stuff are covered on your, one of those other classes that I don't know. Do you know which one it is?
I mean, I'm sure advanced auto technology would be the ones that, um.
Yeah.
That would cover a wide variety versus just, you know, diesel or just autos or just small engines. That advanced autos would be those classes that, um, nobody has taken. Um, you know, that's kind of the other part of it is changing the name of some of these courses, but also, you know, doing more of just versus like small engines. You know, this class can be offered all year long, these kids can take it for two credits all year long, um, which is also really nice. So you're going to get a wide variety, it's going to be, um, it's going to be pretty cool.
The other advantage to having multiple auto ways is that having kids potentially taking multiple courses at the same time during the same block and doing it almost as a guided independent study, um, where they can be focused on different areas in that realm.
Make motion to approve the administration's suggested updates to the 2025, 2026 PHS course handbook for automotive technology.
Say second.
I'll second the motion to approve.
Any other questions or discussion? Then, um, let's vote. All are favoring the motion, say in front of the same line? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, first reading of updates to policy 671-2, expense training. This is really, um, related to lodging, is a major piece. Any questions? And, um, I hope we move that on to the second reading, next one. Then we also have the first reading of updates to policy 345.61, early graduation. This is, um, pretty much a rewrite.
Yeah, this was previously updated in 17, right Deb? This is the one that was in 17, so through doing some research, Deb, saw that the policy, um, ours was from 2017, there were updates through WASB in 2018, so.
So I have, I have a question on, um, two items in this that, just to maybe get a little, I'm, I'm sure you won't know the answer tonight, but just to get a little more information before we actually approve it the next time you need. Um, one is kind of creating a policy that, or policy exception that would allow a student to make this request after three years versus four. And then the second would be that the credit requirement follows statutes, but not our policy, is how I read it, right? So it's allowing it to be according to policy or according to state statutes, not according to what we've adopted that it takes to graduate, is how I read five. And then four, I read as you couldn't request before three years complete. I'm just wondering, is this pretty, is this common? Like, is this what does schools, like, is this what was common? Like, if we looked at all of our surrounding districts, would that be common language?
I can't answer that to me. I know this is the WASB language.
And the only reason I ask that is because we're certainly studying, I mean, we're studying policy that will create, and I'm not, I don't know if it's good or bad, but sometimes I wonder why do we have that? Then why would we have in policy that there are additional requirements to graduate? If we're creating a different policy that says, oh, you have to follow a state statute, then it seems like, why do we have? Like, I, I just want to make sure we're not going down a slippery slope unless this is truly just what everybody has done. And then I wonder why, why wouldn't our policy for graduation be meeting Wisconsin State Statute, PI-18? And we also recommend that this would be best practice to also have these others, but you wouldn't get, because this policy would actually say that a lot of people need to graduate. All they'd have to do is write a letter and say, I want to graduate after three years and I meet Wisconsin State Statute and I don't want to do the other, and I don't know how we wouldn't approve that. And I just want to make sure that you really want, like, that is something we really want to do. And if it, and I just don't know enough about it, um, and I apologize. I read it for the first time this weekend, so I didn't get a chance to, like, do any research on it, but I thought, oh, it's just first reading, so it's not a problem.
Couple thoughts, Asher, so from the board, uh, just in case folks aren't familiar, our 28 credits required for graduation, um, there are no schools in the state that have a higher requirement for graduation credits. Average, I would say, is 24 typically, so Pittsville is at that top end. My former district is at 28 as well. Um, so, so I guess I would clarify that, like, it, not a bad thing, but I would clarify we are not, I don't want to use the term dumbing things down by, by offering some flexibility in this. 28 credits is, is high, it's at the top of the list for requirements. I would focus on part one of this, is that in order to make a request on this, they would have to submit a written request along with their parents or guardians, and then they have to discuss the potential, they would set up a meeting with the school's administrator and counselor to discuss what are the advantages and disadvantages of early graduation, and then receive my approval, and then it would have to come to the board to do this. So I, I don't, I understand, Julie, I absolutely understand your concern, but I, I really don't believe this is going to open up the gates. What it does is it gives us some flexibility to, um, extreme situations. Like, there could be situations that happen that, I, I am not a huge fan of graduating your junior year. I'll just be honest with you. I am not personally a fan of that, um, because I think there's a lot to be said about being here for that last year of, of high school. And like, the current policy allows you to apply at the end of first semester. Um, I have often encouraged kids, when I was in my former role, when I was asking the principal, I would meet with these students and say, is there anything, you know, there's electives you want to take? I would really, I could to try to maybe convince them to stay for their senior year. A lot of times it was a matter of they were just dumb and they were ready to join the workforce, whatever it was. But we went through and had that meeting. I don't see this as making that any different as far as that goes. And I would also tell you, like, I would have a really difficult time approving a situation where they were significantly short of the required 28 credits and didn't have an extreme, like, an extreme example of a situation that led to them lobbying us for why they felt like this was something that benefited them or their family. And then it would still eventually come, like, it wouldn't even make it to the board potentially if I didn't move it forward with a recommendation. So valid concerns, I will tell you, I feel like that first, first part there is going to kind of be a filter, to filter through a lot of these, because there's a process that one would have to go through, um, where they would be discussing with the advantages and disadvantages. And I guess I'll say this, um, with us, I'm all about parent control. Like, if the student and the parents, if they're at that stage, they feel like after going through all these advantages and disadvantages, say, listen, like, let's just say this student has a unique opportunity, they need the requirements, and they can get a job that's paying $50,000 a year, then they turn 18, you know, over the summer.
Or they can start college.
They can start college early, whatever it may be. This allows us to look at each of those cases individually and have some flexibility with what we do to meet the needs of the family and student.
When this came up about 2016, there was a steward who approached the board.
Okay.
And the superintendent at that time recommended that the board not accept that. Do you know why that would be? Did that have anything to do with funding being, on September 14th?
I'll, I'll be honest with you. I, I don't know, I, you know, I wasn't here during that time, but I will tell you right now, that would be way down on that list of things to consider if a request was made. Now, certainly, I'm not saying that the funding doesn't matter, but, um, there would be a list of, like, I think at the top is what's best for the student, like, in that situation. That's what I go with this, is it gives us that flexibility to do what's best for the student in any situation. And, and if we sit down with the family, like, I, I mean, we all know there are going to be some kids that just kind of, they're done. Like, they're done, they've met, they've met, you know, they've accomplished what they need to done, they're done, they're ready. And, and this would be for those situations. I don't feel like this is going to become something that's prevalent and commonplace with students. And I feel like this piece, and the board can certainly make some requests in the language to change. This is just the first reading, so if there's something that would make you feel more comfortable, um, as far as what that, what that would look like. I mean, there are some non-negotiables, like the, the state mandated requirements in, like, the civics test, like, those things. But are going to be, we're never going to say that those things don't matter. Um, effectively, what's going to be is we have, Taylor, refresh my memory, I said, I think we have 13 and a half required elective credits. Here's what it is to get to the 28 credits. So that's a lot, that's a good thing, right? That's a very good thing, we want kids to take those classes, but this would not be cutting short their, their required courses or any of those situations, like, that's not something we'd be looking at doing. This would be a matter of, they've met all the requirements, they've, they've got an extreme situation, they put in a request. We sit down and we, there would be like multiple steps that have to take place. Meet with the family, on the school counselor and high school principal, they would then bring it to me. We would have a meeting, we would discuss the merits of the request, uh, look at other options. That'd be the first thing, we always look at what are other options available, um, including, you know, um, youth apprenticeship, something. Like, we, we would throw everything on the table possible to try to, I, I think, I would tell you, our feeling would be, we would love to keep them as a student, but ultimately, if the family and the student feel that what's best for them at that time, I'd like to, you know, through this process, give them the opportunity to pursue that.
So review for us again the timeline for, um, students that want to graduate and to finish school in January.
In the January, Deb, what's the time, deadline on the submission for early graduation?
March 15. March 15.
Of the prior.
Of the prior year.
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to have a letter written to the, yes, yes, yeah, I just wanted to refresh everyone on, on when that is. And, yeah, a few of those every year.
Yeah.
So.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments about this proposed revision?
Julie, I'll send out something to our cohort and see if anybody else, uh, we'll do a little research and see, like, as far as our surrounding districts, as far as this. The, this, this is from WASB though, the actual policy is from WASB, but I'll see what other districts locally have for early graduation.
Um, also, I would encourage, um, my colleagues here, if you have ideas for, um, you know, working with this language, please go ahead and send that to Jason.
Yeah.
Because this is just the first reading, and what you do during the first reading is talk about it, yeah. So good discussion. Thank you, Julie. Uh, let's move that on to a second reading, next one. Okay, um, item B, private school transportation reimbursement. This is the, um, the usual request that we have for, um, reimbursement every year. Um, I see that this time it is one child and one family. Where sometimes in the past, we've had multiple children, even from the same family. So I would entertain a motion to approve this request for private school transportation parent reimbursement.
I motion that we approve the request for private school transportation, uh, per parent, um, reimbursement per letter that we received from Trinity Lutheran on March 12th of 2025, per Wisconsin State Statute 121.25.
I did look it up, they have told me that too, to request.
It's May 15?
Yeah, I looked in statute, so I was like, because we approved one last time, and I'm like, if it wasn't.
Yeah, Mark seemed awfully early.
It wasn't timed.
Yeah. Is, is it?
It's May 15. May 15. I'll second it. It's been motion seconded to approve the private school transportation reimbursement. Are there any other questions, comments? Seeing none, um, let's take a vote. All are favoring, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I think F, second annual meeting date, time, location. The annual meeting is usually held in June. Uh, this is when the preliminary budget is presented. And the date is, that is proposed, is June 9th at 5:00 PM, which would be one hour prior to our regularly scheduled meeting. So, no vote on that, let's just, let's do it. Okay, item G, employee wages and benefits for 2526.
So as all of you know, we're going to co-op with, um, 12 other schools. And Aspire's health plan was coming in at their not-to-exceed amount. They've given us two years ago at a 12% increase. They modified it to an 80% increase on the signature plan, which would be like a narrow network, and 5% on the, um, full choice three-tier network. Um, so the, they went out to bid, the co-op went out to bid. Security health plan was then selected by the co-op. Um, the simply one HMO for security health plan is only Marshville Clinic Health System, that's it. Um, they do have a couple of, like, chiropractors, physical therapists outside of that, that's not, um, but there's just a very few that are in the simple one. The premier HMO would have, um, pretty much all the Aspire's Marshville Clinic as well. Um, and the dollar amounts of the deductibles, the $16.50 is the new ACA, um, low end that's allowable when you have a health savings account. And $3,300 deductible for family is, um, the low amount for the family, um, policies if you have HSA, which we do. Who, we almost just mentioned, you know, um, auto pocket's not, uh, too much different from where it was before. $1,000 in addition for single, um, $2,000 extra for family. That would be things that maybe aren't covered, um, your prescription costs and such like that, um, you know, like your additional loans that may be required, you schooled on the work system. Otherwise, the, it's all pretty apples to apples as far as, um, the coverage that we have. Um, again, urgent care, emergency room care, if you're, you know, over angry vein, you need to go to Bellin House, then you would be able to go there for urgent care, emergency care. You could be in California and still be able to get that care and the insurance would cover it. Um, prescription drugs are very similar. Uh, one plus with the security health is that, um, the fourth tier here, which are specialty drugs, were capped at four prescriptions, um, for the 25%. At, um, in this virus health plan, security health plan, just it's the 25% whole pay. The plan that I'm using for all of our, um, analysis, I'm assuming that everyone currently on our signature plan for Aspire's health plan will be moving to the premier of security health plans for staying with Aspire's. Because we encouraged everybody to go with the narrow network to save themselves money and the district money. Um, so that's where I'm doing on my projections. However, we're still going to offer both. So there probably are a handful of people that are very loyal, Marshville Clinic people, they've always went there, and that's all they've ever documented with for the last four years that we've had security health. And that's all they've ever documented with for the last four years that we've had security health, then they will take simply one. So the co-op will experience a not to exceed for next year. So the whole co-op needs ten percent of our members to be in the simply one and they will cap it at twenty, or excuse me, at twelve percent across the board. So long as we meet that goal as a co-op, it shouldn't be too hard, I don't think, because we have a few um school districts that are central or centered right around Marshfield Clinic and they're too far from the Aspire's health system. So they do utilize the Marshfield Clinic, almost all their members do or their staff do. So that are, those are the.
And those are Pam, can I just jump in about two things? Two, two significant things during the bid process that M three was getting courses. Originally, they did not have that rate cap of twelve percent next year. That was something they came back with.
Yeah, security?
Yes.
Yeah, security had twelve percent, but we had to make twenty-five percent of our people in simply one and that we were worried we weren't to make.
So they lowered.
So there's about twenty-eight hundred members in the co-op. Um and they're, they're thinking we can make ten percent if co-op is thinking about twenty-five percent might be a stretch.
So they lowered that that parameter to ten percent, which makes it much more attainable, because that was a big deal, is getting that rate cap for the future year. Um what would without the rate cap Pam, I believe the projection for thirty-two percent for this year?
Um for security, or excuse me, for Aspire's, yes, it was thirty-two percent is where it was calculating. Our school was at about a hundred and ten percent um usage. That means we were ten percent more than what we paid in premiums is what they had to pay out for us. And so then these are, these will be the um monthly rates, the simply one, one thousand sixty dollars for single. The um premier will be eleven hundred twenty-five dollars for single. Family is twenty-four hundred five dollars for simply one and family would be twenty-five fifty-five for premier. Um that's full month's premium, not the shared portion. Think that we can go to scenario one. It should be like page three. Slipper. Thank you. Um so the on the first part, so I've actually scanned this opposite because I, this is the side I'm going to talk about, but on the backside, this is our cost, our actual cost for um the health, the Aspire's health plan is on the one side. This is the projected twenty-five twenty-six costs. So what I did in scenario one is I kept the employer percent share at eighty-six percent, the employee share at fourteen percent. The deductibles um at the sixteen fifty, the thirty-three hundred, which are again the minimums when you have an HSA qualified plan. And the HSA I was leaving at three seventy-five for a single and seven fifty for a family based on what we had done last year. So. What I did then is just a little bit more down there, but there we go. So what I did, again, everybody, all these numbers um up here for monthly premium is the premier, okay? But I did separate it out for everybody on the signature plan and everybody on the choice plan because the costs of increase are different for both of these plans. So someone who is currently on the signature only has to go to premier if you want to continue using Aspire's scholarships. So that's going to be costing them significantly more than someone that was on the choice going to um the premier or even dropping down to the simply one. So the total cost to the district um for employee per cost will be one point four three million dollars in premium. Total cost to the employee is three hundred thirty, excuse me, two hundred thirty-two thousand eight hundred. And then scroll down, look for my piece down. So then the HSA, staying the same amount with our singles and families, would be forty-one thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars for a total cost to the district of about one point four seven two million dollars.
Is that maximum, you know, is the forty-one thousand maximum considering everyone maxes out seven fifty and four seventy-five for?
This is what gets contributed, so half goes in in December, half goes in in January, that's uh it's an HSA. So that's just the district's contribution to uh employee. It just goes into their HSA whether they spend it or not.
Who takes what and they keep it?
Yes, it's theirs. It's not like an H R A where it's just paid out or lost, it goes straight.
So that's a known number, we know that number is going to, no matter what plan, they take that number.
Right. So just a little bit more to show me all the group, there we go. So someone going from um the signature plan and having to take now the premier security health plan is going to see a nine point one percent increase in premier. So if you remember, if we go to stay that Aspire's, they only would have had eight percent and the other would have had twelve. Now, anyone who was on choice three tier going to security health premium will have a one point one three percent increase. The premium increase, if security, excuse me, if you go to the security simply one from signature. So that would be saying I'm going from my narrow network only Aspire's to my narrow network only Marshfield. You're going to see a two point seven two percent increase in premium. And if you're going from the Aspire's choice, meaning you can go to any doctor pretty much you want to, down to the security simply one, only Marshfield, but it, you're going to have a savings of four point seven eight percent. So this is totally up to our staff members, how they want to do it. The projections I'm showing here are, I don't want to say worst case scenario, but highest cost scenario, okay? Just so you have a, an idea. So the total increase, excuse me, the total increase over where we were the prior year, or excuse me, for twenty-four twenty-five's actual, is an increase of forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. So that's an increase like in cumulative or in that increase of four point two six percent. Now, of course, that would vary if our, our numbers were flip-flopped and we had thirty-seven and, you know. So that that's strictly based on the numbers of how people are enrolled now. Granted, all the new hires could all come in at families or they could all come in and take opt-out. That was, this is just based on our current who's enrolled as of um March.
So Pam, that includes retirees that have not.
That's everybody. Whoever's enrolled right now, because I figure we're replacing all those people, so the likelihood is they're either going to take the insurance or opt-out.
How many F T E eligible people do we have that could take insurance? I mean, I know how many take it, you've got.
Um yeah, so we have for opt-outs, we probably have, because I just did payroll, I want to say for opt-outs, we probably have closer dozen for more than the opt-out. Yes, maybe you'd like to take advantage of the opt-out.
And is that higher or lower than what we did when we offered opt-out before? I mean, have we always had?
First year?
Um I would, I would say we have more because we actually had four people, four family, like four that were on the family plan changed in December to take opt-outs starting in January. So they had a half a year on insurance and went to opt-out for half a year. So I mean, that was a big change just there, because whatever their spouse was getting had, you know, a better insurance or a different insurance or cheaper insurance. And I don't know their situation, other than they have other insurance. But I know our numbers have only grown in that, getting opt-outs, getting opt-outs. But exactly what, I could come back to you with those numbers, but I don't, you know, a hundred percent about the time. So that's scenario one, everything the same. It's going to cost the district approximately another fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars if we just keep everything the same. And then scenario two, so you can scroll right past this one then. So scenario two, we have the same share percentage, employer eighty-six, employee fourteen, deductibles, of course, are the same, sixteen fifty, thirty-three hundred. But I put in a variable HSA for the employer contribution. So all these numbers up here are still the same as scenario one, okay? And can you scroll down just so you can see these two HSA? There we go. So what I did here is kind of even out the impact between um those that were on the signature, which we encouraged and got a lot of people to switch to, now have to spend more to go to the premier. I thought, let's try and even this out a little bit. Now, I'll show you the like grand total of the numbers in enrollment. So we have twenty-nine people that are currently on the narrow network signature for Aspire's. And if they all move to the premier, I'm proposing that we increase the HSA payment for those people only from signature to premier for one year only, to kind of even out the variances gap. Anyone else that's going from choice to premier has only a one percent increase. Or if they leave to simply one, they're saving money. And if a signature goes to simply one, they're basically only at two point seven percent. So it does bump this number up a little bit from forty-one four twenty-five up to like forty-eight. So if you scroll down just to the. So all our percents here are still the same, this is for the premiums, but the cost now has has gone up to sixty-five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for total cost increase. So the total net increase now, instead of four point two six, is four point seven six. So an extra half a percent increase to employer cost. And then Debbie, you can go to this micro skinny bitty one here. So you should all be able to see this on your screen, so if you need to blow it up, please do so. So this is scenario one, the showing all the costs. Again, cost to the district, extra cost is fifty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. The extra cost to a single, if they go from the um signature over to the premier plan to security health, is about a hundred and fifty-eight dollars a year, that's just their share, and a family's is three hundred and fifty-eight dollars per year. And someone going from the choice three tier over to the security premier is going to, for a single, have an increase of about twenty-one dollars and for a family, about forty-eight. So this scenario two, I kind of take out that big bump. Where it's in pink down here, so extra HSA, you're going from signature to premier, an extra one thirty-five to single and three hundred and ten to family, so that it nets to about the same cost. So someone going from signature to premier is only going to have an impact in this year annually of twenty-two dollars seventy cents and a family of forty-eight dollars. So those would be the two proposals I'm suggesting right now, where that compares to as far as our um referendum planning goes, we were figuring twelve percent. So a twelve percent increase would have been about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to the district, district share, if we kept everything the same. Just as a comparative, either one of these options by going to the security health plan is still saving the district additional funds.
Are these numbers you're saying per month, or twenty-two seventy per month?
That's per year.
That's the year.
Yeah, so then the, the monthly savings are in these last two columns. So then in scenario two, it's basically, you know, two dollars to a single person a month, extra cost and four dollars to a family, extra cost.
So one of the, go ahead, Pam.
So what you said in scenario two would quite a smaller would be budgeted with the referendum?
No.
Either one.
No, neither one will. It'll just add a little extra cost to the district's share.
But now what under would be budgeted?
Pardon?
The under would be budgeted?
Both, both.
Under what our referendum projection was, yes.
What is the, what's the savings to the district for an employee to go with simply one? It saves some money, how much does it save us?
Well, it'd save us um.
I'm just trying to find, I'm struggling to find that number.
Yeah, just a second. So twenty-four, twenty-five hundred bucks. So it'd save us about eighty-six dollars per family per month. That's about a hundred dollars, hundred dollars more in premium per month.
Than what, than what we're currently paying with Aspire's?
If they stayed on signature and went to simply one?
Okay, okay. So from this year current to next year, if they went to simply one, it would be about eighty-six dollars a month, you said?
If, if they did the, if they went from signature.
Which was.
So on this sheet, okay, so signature family is going to be twenty-five twenty-nine and simply one would be twenty-four oh five.
But twenty-five is what we pay this year, right now?
No.
No, I'm wondering what would we would save from what they're probably on right now to going to simply, because that's what the show is.
No, this is showing the, the, the.
But it showed somewhere that they don't have a savings.
It's showing the increase, correct?
Negative four point seven eight percent.
Right, so that's the, the where we're at now versus.
Yes, so what is that dollar amount?
So that dollar amount is the twenty-three forty-one. So this first column here is where we were. This first column is where we were and this is what the projected increases would have been for.
So right now.
Signature, this is the choice three. So this is what they were and this is what they were projecting.
Sorry, that's just hard because they're all turned different ways and so.
Oh.
Like it's hard to bounce back and forth, so just a second. So, and the reason I'm asking the question is because, I mean, I would like to consider how do we incentivize our employees to go to simply one? And so I'd like to think about how do we take what is saved by going to simply one? I mean, not forcing, I'm not suggesting forcing, but how do we encourage people to go to simply one? Because it's the most economical for the district and then how do we take what, how do we take some of that savings and actually in the encouragement to try to encourage people to go to simply one?
Well, it, it seems to me that that's what is proposed in scenario two, it's bumping up the HSA.
But not encouraging them to simply one.
To clarify.
Encouraging them to the.
And the reason is.
It's actually encouraging them to go to the other, because you're giving them the difference.
I want to clarify, but but remember, and this is a double-edged sword, because remember, as we, we went to this Aspire's a year ago. And these folks that took them there are, I'm sorry, so we encouraged them to go, I mean, the reality was.
We encouraged them all to move to Marshfield Clinic. The goal is the narrow network to Aspire's.
Here's your argument you're going to hear from people is they established care and got all these doctors, which is a cumbersome process. And then the Marshfield Clinic is very difficult to get appointments into. It just is, they're very difficult. So now, the idea behind doing that was to soften that blow because like, because there's going to be people saying, I just established care for my family. So now, if you were to switch again, and this would be the danger, is if someone's going to switch again, if we're incentivizing that, is that the co-op decides what we take.
And they already said they're going off to bid again next year.
Because we'd be sending out to. And you would be asking these folks to, to jump back and forth and try to reestablish care.
Yeah, and that's why it's never a good idea to encourage people to take a certain type of plan. Those are decisions that individuals have to make.
Oh, and, and I would one hundred percent support that we have a plan that allows people to go to both of our carriers. So I don't mean that, I just mean that I think we might want to make it more fiscally advantageous to take the one that is.
It will be for them, because they will save four point seven eight percent. So I have um.
Not, not allow it, because I absolutely agree.
Maybe you would like to do scenario two, from the present.
Yeah, I would actually do a scenario three where I even, I would, I would add HSA dollars to people who actually choose simply one to encourage people to go to the, to, versus paying the one that's actually having the bigger premium. Because we want to push people towards the plan that's most economical. But not tell them they have to, right? But we're going to invest back in you. We're going to invest back and give you some of the money that will save by you choosing that, or we won't give you back the money because you didn't choose the one that was. Or we won't give you back the money because you didn't choose the one that was saving. That's okay. It's your choice. But how do we, versus just putting money
They have to say, how much do you save and how many people would you need to ask?
Well, and you've got to think of the soft cost, which is going to be upsetting people. That soft cost.
Full disclosure.
No.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we didn't choose this scenario.
Full, full disclosure, because I can use, we can't talk about individuals. I, I can talk about my So with my family, we went to the narrow network last year, which is more cost effective to the district and spent months trying to establish care for our four kids and our family. Here's all I'm going to say. I, I am totally open. With whatever the board decides, we're going to stay with that because I'm not going through that again. We're not going to go through trying to establish care. Simple, if it cost a thousand dollars more, we'd be paying it because that isn't worth the headache. I would struggle with further, like you'd have people with further incentivizing going to the other plan, does that make sense? Because I feel like the incentive already would be is if the board just elected not to make up that difference and just say, listen, this stinks, but it's the way it worked out with consortium. That to me incentivizes that already. If, if you, after you add more off, I think you're going to create, and I'm not speaking to me personally, I'm saying the folks that went with the narrow next year are going to feel even more animosity saying, wait a minute, we did this last year, now we're switching in, now it's incentivized because it wasn't last year monetarily. So I think probably if the board were uncomfortable in doing that, the play would be to just say, we're just, it just stays where it's at for both groups and the families have to make a decision.
Well, how would you incentivize people to take AspiRus last year?
We talked about the savings.
We talked about the savings, the savings and the premium.
You can do the same thing, talk about the savings.
We also need to and one other thing that came out of our M3 meetings was we have like 28 members. If 50% of our members decided we're all going to Marshfield Clinic, can Marshfield Clinic handle it? And M3 said right now they're having a harder time finding providers. It just went through all merger. There's a lot up in the airs and I think it would be I think it would be disadvantage to the board if they forced one or the other.
I don't, yeah.
Because I think we just need, they have a choice. They have a choice, whatever they want.
Is whatever, I mean, even I would think in the worst case scenario, the difference is less than we budgeted. I mean, I'm very much a conservative. I want to save as much money as possible. But I really don't like to mess with people's individual, people are going to have to make choices. Am I going to pay this higher premium? Am I going to do a lot of lower premium? Do what?
Yep, and if we actually kind of look at this, so the, the people right now on signature, which is just AspiRus, which 29. And there's 37 on the full choice. So that could be they all, they blend the doctors, you know, from one clinic. Or they could all be simply one people and switch to simply one. I have no idea. And we didn't poll people. There was just, it was not a kind of poll or staff at all.
And the reality is the increase for a family plan, if someone wanted to stay, they go to the premier, it's going to be about $27 a month extra. And I'm not trying to diminish that, but like, to me, as I, it's well worth it to maintain our doctors, $27, right? And I think most people wouldn't take that decision.
Yeah, thanks for $30 a month.
Yeah. Um, I see a lot of advantages to just sticking with scenario one. And, you know, particularly if the consortium is talking about going out to bid again next year. And I think Pam, you described it as the soft cost. I look at it as whiplash.
Definitely.
It's like, okay, you told me to do this and now you told me to do that and yeah, or encourage me to do this, that or the next thing.
Because I know Pam, our original projections indicated approximately with the switch to the security was about an 84?
No, about $143,000.
Dollar savings, no less savings to the district.
The savings.
Remember comparing apples to apples with the AspiRus?
If we would have stayed with the new rates under AspiRus, it would have been about an $84,000 savings.
More, so we saved $84,000.
Which security was versus everybody who had
That's the minimum savings when they switch that.
Yeah.
Roll here depending on
Which correlates with our $140,000, you know, that we, it's kind of, you know, the two of them.
But yes, to clarify, maybe it's point, both scenarios fall on, I mean, what was budgeted, we're planning for the insurance increase.
And they both are, it's a narrow network versus a wide network. The names just drive me crazy.
Right.
It's a narrow network, AspiRus does a narrow network and a wide network.
Yes.
Security is offering a narrow network and a wide network.
It just went left through.
And it doesn't have, one benefit to security, it doesn't have a tier deductible. Like a choice three tier had three tiers. The premium has
The wide network.
Yes, yes. So it's called choice three tier. Because it had three tiers of deductibles depending on where you went.
Okay.
Security doesn't have that. It's one deductible. So you could blend your AspiRus doctors and your Marshfield Clinic doctors if one family does.
Um, well Julie, you suggested possibly a, a, a third option. What, what do other board members think?
Well, I just, as a caveat, I, I don't have a third option and I have an open enrollment coming up before our next board meeting.
Well, we haven't any ones yet, but, um, I, I, it's, it's about $80,000, it's about $70,000 if everyone switched to simply one. Based on percentages. I mean, I just took the 4.78% times the, our portion. If that's the decrease, that might not be the real number. But again, and I wouldn't recommend the people, but I'd recommend we invested differently if we wanted to consider it. But I can live with option ones.
I prefer option one over option two.
Julie's proposing, because it still incentivizes that without any additional costs.
To more premiums.
I don't know, I'm going to break up my view from you. I have every, no matter, I've probably paid a lot more than 27.
Like I sense it over for us, either way.
After I'm ready to roll.
Yeah, for the convenience, just an interest.
Okay. So it appears we need a motion. So I would be, well, okay. So we need a motion, um, it appears we need a motion to accept, um, scenario one with the consortium moving, with the consortium moving to SHP and accepting Pam's scenario one. And then it appears to me also need a motion to approve the HSA savings to keep it the same.
You would need to approve both offer security health plan, simply one and security health plan premier. That would be the first.
I mean, you have so many to choose on.
So that's what the law did. So those, that's, that's first thing. And then the second would be, um, the second motion would be the health savings account amount. So the 375 per single, which that would be the same. So those would be the two different.
Okay, thank you. Clarity on the motions. I would entertain a motion related to the health insurance choice. Then I will move that we approve the consortium choice of security health plan. And for our district, implement scenario one as presented. It's been moved in second to approve the, um, move to SHP and scenario one. Any other thoughts, discussion? Hearing none, um, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. I would entertain a second motion to have the HSA, the district contribution to the HSA savings account remain the same.
Make your motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to have the district portion of the HSA savings account remain the same.
I ask one other One question that is just for employees who take the plan, right?
They have to be on our health insurance plan, correct?
Because they say it's on another one.
And, and it's according to what plan they take. So if they only take a single plan, even if they have a family, they're getting the single reimbursement.
Correct.
If they switch during the year, it is pro rate period.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, I, let's vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next, we have employee wage increases.
Okay, so, um, these numbers on this column is the 24, 25 based on our current staff that we have. So this is not taking any counts of any retirements for the patients. And then the 2.9% CPI increase for our referendum projection. So we said we were going to do CPI plus 500. CPI came in 0.05% lower than projected. So these first two, so for admin and hourly, that's just a you know, that's an easy calculation. It's, you know, the, just multiply it up with the percentage. The teaching staff, and to recall, last time we looked at our current staffs just for 25, 26 pay scale. And we had a few people that were a year or two off the scale. So that's why this number looks a little weird because we have, again, most people that are, um, you know, going to be bumped up a little bit extra. Then what I did was added $500 to all full time and pro rated for part time. So if somebody worked 20 hours a week, they're going to charge $50. And then I added that on. Now, for teaching staff, which is a little unique this year because we're putting everybody back on the scale. So not everyone that goes back on the scale will automatically get $500. What I did was calculate out what they got for 24, 25 times, or I added then the 2.95% for CPI plus 500. Because that's what everybody was going to get for the referendum. So I got that dollar amount. Then I looked to see where did they fall on the scale with our new scale you guys approved last month. And then whatever difference is, is what they're going to get. Now, there's a few people that are actually getting more on the pay scale because they were off the pay scale. That looks like they should have to pay money back, you know, it kind of comes out negative. But they're actually going to be getting more in their staff, a little bit more than CPI plus the 500 for this one year. So that's when we look at these numbers, they're a little skewed. So like for hourly staff, a school year full time person is getting 500. And the administrators who work year round are getting 500. So it looks like, you know, it's skewed a lot, a lot higher based on the averages because the other ones are working nine months versus twelve months. So the net increase, you know, for overall will be about 4% combined. Now granted, we're going to have some savings, some increase, you know, with replacement of staff. Right now, um, based on losing some federal funding as well. Or I should say federal funding that sort of just has disappeared. Hopefully it comes back. We're at about a $30,000 to the benefit of the district right now with who we've replaced, you know, with the newer people versus some of our people that left. So we, you know, these numbers are probably a little on the high side right now because of that. So all I would need, I guess, from you would be, um, you know, if you agreed to the 2.95 plus 500 based on, you know, what I had here, I would prepare contracts based on those numbers or the letters of assignment based on those numbers.
Pam, question for the board. Where, where does this come out with what was projected through the referative budgeting process?
Um, well, it's going to be just a smidge less. It's pretty close to being spot on. It's just a smidge less.
A little bit less, right?
Only because, um, like this, the 3% plus the 500, um, was like 3.25 or 3.45. I can't remember exactly. Wasn't prepared for that question. But I know this is just a smidge less than what we had projected because we were looking at 3% CPI instead of 2.95.
Questions? If there are no questions, I would entertain the appropriate motion to approve the wage increases.
I like the motion to approve the wage increases as presented.
Any further discussion or questions? Debbie will take a vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, next we go to item 10, which is the legislative updates. Here's all kinds of interesting things going on. Um, the joint finance committee is holding public hearings throughout the state. Two have been held, two are coming up. One is in Wausau on the 29th. Is it 27? Yes. It's the 29th in Wausau. And, um, and, um, in our board retreat, um, I think we can talk a little more about strategy for that. Definitely there's value in representatives from the Pittsville community and the Pittsville school district to be there to share a concise message. Rick, would you like to share a little bit about your experience?
That was an experience. Uh, Mary Ann, they're holding me on Monday to see if I would come down for a group called Synergy. And I looked at the talking points that were being brought up and uh, I was very interested, of course, in the special education funding. I assumed going down there Thursday morning that I would be in a group talking with our local legislators about things that concern us in central Wisconsin. That wasn't it. It was, we're more like a lobbyist almost. Uh, it was a group of three, um, a CEO from Simplicity Credit Union in Marshfield, a woman who worked for the Potawatomi out of Wausau, and myself in our group. And we went to see four different legislators and we had four different talking points. Uh, one was about a dam replacement on Lake Wausau. The one that I was concerned about was the funding for special education. The need for the state to help us out a little bit, pick up their mouth. We weren't asking for any set amount. We just, I just basically asked them for help. I visited four different legislative offices and was very impressed that three of them took the time to really take notes and ask good questions and showed a lot of concern and even if their minds were made up before I went in there, it seemed they were all supportive of helping us out with these special education situations that we have financially. We'll find out, but I was, I left feeling very positive about the day I had in Madison. So it was a good day considering, uh, Mary Ann didn't fully tell me what I was going down there for.
Well, I did. I sent you all the written information on economic development.
Yeah, I, I did not know that. Uh, I thought I was there to talk about special education.
You were.
I was there to talk about all four of the items. I was only prepared for one.
You, okay, your other team people took care of those other parts.
The other ones.
Yes, you were the, you were the key person.
I was definitely dependent on for that. It was a very good It was a very good.
There was a lot of other stuff, but I did not need to follow up, right?
There was. And that group was, that was a very solid group that was in. They both were experienced, one had three years, one had two years of being there already. So that really helped. The morning we were in, seven hours to learn what we were doing, and then in the afternoon, we spent a half an hour with each legislator later. Actually, we only met one legislator, we met with three of the office people. So, one out of the four was a legislator. Super, definitely listened. But it was a positive day, very positive. And, yes, Mary Ann, I would go again next year.
Well, we'll see if we have an education issue paper. Yes, this is, this is the client mindset, the synergy group, and one of the issue papers was supporting the workforce, the two-hour students. There were actually two asks. One was increasing the funding for the Wisconsin Grant Program, which goes to students that enrolled either in the UW's or the technical college system. And the other was to increase the special education funding. So, yeah, and the reason I called Rick is because he's retired. And I know the rest of you are working, and Julie, you've been down there for other legislative days. So, so that's why I called Rick. Although first I talked to Jason, and then I said, do you think Danny could come? Uh, no. Maybe next year.
Mary Ann, there's also a number of events happening this month. The Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction is holding four educational sessions on how federal and state dollars impact Wisconsin's schools. One was today, and then the other virtual one was Thursday, April 24th. And then there's two in person, of course, they happen to be in Wauwautosa and McAsland, which is not anywhere near us. However, so I'm not going to bat, but, and the one today was from 4 to 5. But Thursday, April 24th, it's from 6 to, 6:30 to 7:30. It's just a, I mean, I'm sure you're just listening, but you're getting some really good updates on what's happening globally.
And tell us about, a little bit about the stuff left that you've heard about the education funding.
Yeah, so I attended that legislative breakfast in Wisconsin Rapids. And, of course, the school board for Wisconsin Rapids was there, you know, Ron was there, superintendent. So they asked a few specific questions, and, I mean, all of our local people were there. So Testan was there, and Prude was there, and Tom Chef was there. And, I mean, I, I think that, you know, I think that they're really challenged right now with, you know, they're, everyone's like, well, there's this $4 billion surplus, but they're really, what they would say is that they've identified that there's about 1.8 billion in new funding. Like, so that's funding that they can actually allocate, knowing that it would continue on into the future. So there might be some one-time funding for them to look at, but what's moving forward into the future is about 1.8 billion. So that's what, you know, Joint Finance is working at, like, how to allocate that money, not allocate money that doesn't exist after you spend it. And, you know, and truthfully, on the Medicaid side, without even any federal changes, and cost to continue is 1.6 billion in Wisconsin, so, you know, it was stated, like, we can't, like, it's, like, we can't continue to afford that. And then the question was asked about schools, and the comment, the couple comments that were made were, there's no way what Governor Evers put in place will actually land in the budget. However, there is conversations being had about some modest adjustments. And one specific, because of course, the school formula was brought up, and, you know, they said the same thing you've heard them say when they come here, which is the school formula is like, you know, it's, you've got winners and losers, and the winners don't want to lose, and the losers want to win, right? I mean, so like, it's just a, so they absolutely said they do not see the school formula changing, with, especially with this biennium, but potentially a modest or some funding that's on the table of conversation would be that districts that are low, not changing the formula, but districts that are low, giving a vote. So the winners don't lose, but the losers win a little. Would be how I would describe it, they might not have said it that way, but that's how I would describe it. So those were a couple of the things that were said at that legislative breakfast.
There is another legislative breakfast coming up on Friday this week.
Do you need an attorney?
Great, because in addition to, okay, I'm not sure, no, Testan's not coming, but Senator Tom Schiff is coming, Representative Spiros is coming, and also, one of the people that is RSVP, yes, is Representative Karen Heard, who is actually, she's on the Joint Finance Committee, and she is actually from kind of west of us. She goes into Clark County, and also I think it's the, yeah, like, within the Marshfield, you know, sphere of influence. So that's going to be very interesting, I have not met her.
Do you know what, for both of us on Joint Finances?
No, I do not.
Okay. Only because, again, I would say that there were people who were able to contribute more to the conversation at the legislative breakfast, and then people who were able to contribute less based on their experience and/or maybe level of influence right now, and kind of the conversations they may or may not be in, cause all of them aren't in them. So hopefully she'll bring, hopefully she will bring what potentially, you know, Testan has the opportunity to bring at the Wisconsin Rapids one, which is just more knowledge, right? Cause you're involved in conversations.
The other thing I think we need to find out for sure is who the non-Joint Finance people have for budget buddies. Because everyone that's not on Joint Finance is assigned a budget buddy. And they're their kind of liaison with the Joint Finance Committee. So, yeah, if folks can come on Friday, that would be wonderful.
Does pause. Do you have to register in a queue?
Yeah, 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 but you can also just show up, but you have to show up with a check.
Oh, so you have to register to go?
Well, they want you to register, because they need to plan how many, but if one or two people show up, you know, because there'll be someone that won't come, so they won't renounce it. And also, I'm monitoring it.
If the rest of the board members, Julie, I know you're aware of it, I can share the link with you if you, if there was any interest here.
Yeah, yeah, I will be there for sure. So, so stay tuned. Okay, I have number 11, public comments.
Are they accepting questions at the end of time like you did in Rapids? Or is it just asking from the floor?
You can, well, there's gonna be some, it'll be like Rapids in that everybody has like five minutes to talk, which means they'll talk for 10. And then I, there's some questions in the can, if people are shy. But yes, there will be an opportunity for questions from the floor. Okay, public comments, it doesn't appear we have anyone for public comments.
If I may?
Yes.
I, so the doors were here tonight, I had actually encouraged them to come, because she had talked to me about something she wanted to bring up, a way to support students in the community, I had encouraged her. Just throwing this out for the board to consider, is that with having public comments at the end of the board meeting only, especially on lengthy agenda nights, I do know districts that have a public comment at the beginning and one at the end, so that if there are folks that want to come in and make a public comment, that they may not, especially on one version, obviously when we decide that, just something to keep.
Did they register for public comments?
No.
Okay.
I wonder if they even knew.
Because if someone registers, or there is, I mean, we in the past have moved that agenda item off. But, but I have no idea, I was kind of wondering why they were here.
Yeah, it dawned on me about halfway through, cause we had talked a couple months ago about it, and I had encouraged her to come in, something I thought would be something that would be valuable to the board. But just something to think about is we can ask, no, it was about some community supports for students and stuff, some ideas and stuff, and I'll reach out to her tomorrow and talk to her. Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, we can move them up. Quite frankly, I would not be opposed to moving public comments up to the very beginning, but we can talk about that as part of the retreat, where we're really looking at the big picture.
Yep, absolutely, and I would just tell, this last thought I would share is the damage you have at them at the beginning and the end is sometimes you'll have folks who want to make a comment, then after the item is discussed, they have an additional comment after the board discusses an agenda, just a thought. Yep, that'd be a good discussion point for, that would add that to the board retreat.
Timing of public comments, so.
Thank you.
Okay, future agenda items. Well, we're gonna have school year summary and goals for next year coming up, from our building principals. Leslie's still working on that update to the promotion and retention. And then I know we've talked about having, learning about the transparency task force, and also to talk about the related damages again. So, anything else that we should put on as future agenda items? Well, if you have any, feel free to email Jason, and we can put them on, yes. So now I would entertain a motion to move into closed session per Wisconsin statute 19.85, prun 1, prun C, prun F, for the purpose of covering some personnel issues.
I'll make a motion to move to closed session. I'll second.
It's been moved in seconded to closed session, Julie, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we are now in closed session.
I have a little tailor to stay, to answer any questions on that first item, I'm sure.
I think that's great.